That's a little slow, isn't it? Okay, we're ready. Okay, it's six P M. Today is Tuesday, October the tenth, twenty twenty-three. We'd like to begin our city council. Meeting at this time, we're gonna make just a little bit of an adjustment. We showed that we're gonna have our L B A. Meeting first, but Mark Anderson called and isn't quite here, so we're gonna move that further down in the agenda. We'll begin with our city council meeting, begin with a pledge of allegiance, and then. Councilman Deals will give us a prayer. You'll stand and repeat after me.
All right, I love to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which sustains. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind of most gracious heavenly father, we are grateful that we could come today. And talk about the needs of this city. And to. Hopefully discern what needs to be done. And what we can do about it. Please bless us, Father, that we'll be able to make the right decisions tonight. Please bless that. All of our. Members here will be able to. Look at the. Look at the information given to us. And that we can see it with the. The eyes that are needed to to help the city move forward. And as we pray for in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Hey, thank you. We'll begin with our public comments. If you've got a comment, we'd ask that you'd come up to the microphone. State your name and the city from which you reside. And keep your. Comments to three minutes and in. Address the entire council, please.
My name is Brett Paul. I live in South Weaver and here for four time or two. I think most people know that all cities and towns are open to that. And safeguard. To help them all, or to take them to town. That applies in most places. It doesn't apply in South Weaver right now. Well, that might apply in South Weaver right now as it relates to polluted property.
Hold that microphone.
Can't hear me?
I can, but the people listening may not be able to.
I had this from the three minutes.
No, you're good.
Anyway. A large part of the city of South Weaver is polluted. But you keep putting subdivisions in there. So that's what we're known for. We're known for our polluted subdivisions. They're still on the national priority list as some of the most hazardous to human health in the entire country. But you fill them with people. You fill them with people. Shouldn't have done that. That was wrong. And how do you correct it? How do you correct something like that? Over the last twenty years, I've tried to convince you not to do this. I've tried to convince Hillfield they should clean up the pollution. I've been unsuccessful both places. It's still polluted. In fact, Hillfield says it's not going to be resolved until some uncertain time in the twenty forty's. Doesn't matter. You've already created all these subdivisions. You've already put people at risk. What you gonna do about it? How you gonna make that make them well? Every one of them is a potential responsible party. Every one of them is responsible for pollution on their ground and anything that migrates through to the next property. The city did that. You shouldn't have done that. How do you fix that? You can't. You've caused a problem that's just beyond repair. Until some uncertain time when I'll be dead in the twenty forty's, then maybe they'll say, well, this, you know, all this pollution just. Miraculously went away. But it's not gonna go away. Things like arsenic never go away. They'll be just as contaminant. A thousand years from now as it is now. You had to make the initial right decisions and you filed up. You need to find ways to make this right. You need to stop things. And and get back to a state of normalcy as best you can. Now, I need to tell you that I filed a complaint. With the Environmental Protection Agency. And it called an environmental violation. I don't think you have the authority to go out there where this is on the national priority list and create these subdivisions. You don't have the authority. To delist something from the national priority list. You just don't. And yet you went ahead and created all these new subdivisions in ground that they said was the most hazardous to human health in the entire country. How do you fix this? You caused it. I don't have an answer how you're gonna fix it. But it needs to be fixed. You put people in jeopardy. Healthwise, financially, every other way. You need to do a better job. Need to correct this. I left a copy. Of the means to be delisted. You can't do it. It has to be done by. E P A, but at least there's a process where it can be delisted. If Hillfield's right, it will never be delisted in your lifetimes in all probability, or especially mine. I'm a smidgen older than. Your mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Any other comments? Hey, then we'll move along with our. We have a presentation of new employees. We'd like to introduce everyone to our power. Our new Parks Manager Shay Olton, if she would stand up, please. And Park Technician Nate Robinson, if you'd stand up. We want to welcome you to South Weaver. I know, Nate, you have been working with us. Shay, we welcome you to South Weaver. We hope that you. Find our city as beautiful and. And great place to be as we all. Think that it is. We're excited to have you here and. Welcome aboard and. Thank you for accepting employment here with South Weaver City. Council, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask these two? Or anything? Haley always has a. A comment, so you might have to come up to the mic.
I just would love to learn more about. So where are where do you live? Where are you living from a little?
Um, I live in Salt Lake. Um, I worked in Salt Lake City School District. My degree is in horticulture. I'm a total plant nerd. I love to grow giant pumpkins. I love to be outside, go camping. Anything to do with the outdoors is me. What other questions did you have?
Oh, um. Okay, if your favorite fictional book or movie became reality, what would our world look like right now?
Oh. Fictional. Can I make one up? Oh, maybe like Jack and the Beanstalk, maybe something like that. Yeah. Who would have plants everywhere?
Good answer.
It goes to like a big golden goose egg.
Say plants and trees, and then you'll and then Joel will really like that.
All right. Well, if you can get our tree straightened, that would be amazing.
Um, let me consult Mother Nature back to them.
Awesome. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Nate.
Yeah. Hey. Tell us about yourself.
Oh, I've lived in South Weaver my whole life. And. Those are the new though.
That's it.
Sounds just like a South Weaver.
That's all you need to know.
Well, Northridge. I also like the great outdoors, like camping, hiking, skiing. Fishing and I'm good at all.
Super.
Um, okay, if you.
You never know what kind of.
We don't know what's gonna come out of the moment.
Uh.
It's fair down.
No, let's go with, okay, if you had to lose one sense, but the other sense had to be greatly heightened. So one of your senses had to be gone, but another one to replace it was significantly heightened. What would you choose to lose and to hide?
Probably, um. I don't know. It's a tough question, I guess. Uh. Touch.
You lived, you said the touch?
Yeah.
Okay.
Technically, I guess.
Okay, and what would be increased?
Probably a sight. That's pretty cool. It will see you really well.
Wow, but not touch. Yeah. Very fascinating.
Very good.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Appreciate you both. Thank you.
Okay, you guys. Are welcome to be excused, or you can stay for the rest of the meeting. It's up to you.
Everybody.
You're on your own. Okay, next item is our consent agenda. Looking for an approval on September twelfth minutes.
I have a few questions. That's okay, right? Let me, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
So September twelfth, twenty twenty-three minutes, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three minutes. September's checks and August. Budget to actual, and I know there's some questions, so we'll. Open it up for questions from the council.
Yeah, I appreciate the answers I got already to several of the questions I had from the staff, so thank you on that. Just a couple of clarifications. On the money to. The, um. South Weaver days. We're paying for the past one, or are we paying for next year's when we give them the seventy-five hundred dollars?
The money that you see going, we collect all of their registration fees. And so we do the one payment to them that's in the budget right at the beginning of the year. And then all the other monies that are, you'll see remitted to them are those registration fees that have come in over. Uh, when they first started advertising and so forth. As they come in, then we issue checks every so often to remit those funds to them. So no money. Generally goes directly to them. All the events are. Uh, on our sports site through the F A C. And then we collect the money and then remit that back to Country Fair Day. So that's what you're seeing. So there's only the one payment that was budgeted. And then you'll see other payments, and all of those are just remitting the revenues which we receive.
Yeah, and I think I understand the remitting aspect that the seventy-five hundred is that for the past years or the upcoming years? Like, are we a year ahead or are we paying after the fact?
Current year. The payment that we made at the beginning of the year was for the Country Fair Days event.
They just, just.
Because it happens at the beginning of our fiscal year.
Okay, and then the other one was, if somebody could explain the lens purchase, what was that for and?
You bet. So we purchased a seventy to two hundred millimeter lens as a low F stop. The meat, the reason that this is a pricier lens is it's a quick response lens. Used for motion capture in events and sporting events. Um, we have a big push. In our communications to use South Weaver people, places and things in our promotions. Um, and we're only as good as the tools that we have. I used this in a prior, um, job. It's it's a, it is a very nice lens. It's durable. Um, it's all self enclosed, and so it doesn't get, uh, sand and dirt inside of it, which helps when the wind blows. Um, it also allows us to, uh. Just take better photos and not get into people's personal space in events. Uh, think of soccer games, football games, uh, allows us to be on the sidelines and take, um. Action shots of our our subjects in order to promote our future parks, events and and recreation programs. Um, so it was inside the budget in our equipment line. Uh, we had twenty-five hundred in our equipment line. Um, and we purchased this to help us with our future promotions.
So the other aspect about the equipment budget, then we should be good the rest of the year because we're almost exceeding it, or are we gonna be? Using up all that twenty-five hundred plus?
Well, we'll keep it at the twenty-five hundred. That's that's our budget for the year. We're not anticipated to go over.
All right, thank you.
I just had one quick question, Mayor. Um, on page eighty-seven talks about the utilities for the F A C for the summer. My question was. I'm assuming that the city's paying for that all summer long, correct? Because the school district does not utilize that facility. That's only borne by city. Those costs? Okay, so. During the school year, do we split it fifty-fifty? Do we have? I'm just curious about that contract because I know that there was discussion about revisiting that with Davis School District. About the terms of that contract and if we've had that conversation.
I don't remember. I don't remember the specifics of the contract to that, to that degree. I'd have to look at it for myself. Uh, but if I remember correctly, the the utilities are split during the.
During the school year.
Right, and the city. Okay, that was just curiosity. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yeah, our next agenda item is, uh, public work staffing.
Uh, we need to approve.
Mayor.
Oh, we need a motion. Yeah.
I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda. Yeah.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, say hi.
Hi, bye.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move forward. Public work staffing. We, uh. Anyone have any? Concerns or anything we need to discuss on this? What we need to realize here is. Uh, on this staffing and on this, uh. Uh, salary payroll increase. Uh, we need to realize this is not a merit. Adjustment. This is a market adjustment that we felt that we needed to make. And so with that being said, anyone, anyone on the council? Any questions?
Does everybody understand the background on where the extra? Revenue came from to be able to do this?
Okay. Unless, unless staff wants to give a background for the public, so.
Okay. It's in the packet. Are we good?
I think we're good.
Okay. Then there's no. Discussion on this. I'd look for a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the wage increases for the Public Works Department as presented in the addendum. I second that.
And we have a motion and a second. We'll begin with a roll call vote.
So this is.
No, we'll do just a motion. We just need a. A, a, just a motion, just.
Is this based on? Dave's amended?
Right, yeah, I saw Dave's amended document. The addendum.
Okay.
It came out.
Okay. So with that, all in. Joel. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next item, uh, we'll. Put off until, uh. Mark Anderson comes. So we'll move on to. Number eight. Resolution twenty-three forty-seven amending development agreement for South Weaver Gateway. Uh. Need a discussion on this?
I think so.
Yep.
Okay, would someone from, uh, Gateway, would you like to come up and? Kind of tell us. What you're asking for here?
My name's Jake, Timbers with Oak Creek Homes. I'm the owner and developer. I think there's a, there's a few items that we're looking for in the amendments. Trevor, maybe I'll help you a little bit. We're, I think first and foremost, we're asking to amend the commercial requirement versus. Uh, the town certificates of occupancy, how those two are tied together. Um, we're looking to amend the requirement for the park for the garage sizes. And. I think in general, we are. Wanting to approve the plan. So I think those are. They must fit. And then there was also some discussion actually. Uh, surrounding the commercial and a potential gym. That would come into the commercial space and purchase. Build and. Operate, so.
To kind of add a little bit more context to that, uh, so that the gym portion is is. Uh, informs the commercial request, right? Um, but there are items that need to be worked out in a future council meeting if that. If the plan is gonna be amended. And with parking on the gym, that was a a a public comment in the last meeting. So that's not on the table tonight for discussion as part of, unless we wanted to amend the development agreement to allow for different parking requirements. Um, I would, I would advise not. Uh, amending that on the fly without further, uh, research on that. So the two requests in the development agreement were. Modification inside our strategic growth overlay zone, um, garage widths requirements. Uh, those requirements are twenty-two feet square. Um, the developer, uh, requested twenty feet square in the planning commission discussed. And came to a number of twenty by twenty-two feet. Um, as as the potential recommendation on the development agreement for the garage widths. Uh, to allow a deeper width for larger vehicles that also accompanies their, every unit is twenty-five feet. That also accompanies there, every unit is twenty-five feet setback from the, the back of the sidewalk. And so that gives a twenty-five foot driveway on, on top of that as well. And then the planning commission recommended.
I'm sorry, did you say all of the driveways throughout the entire project now? Have a twenty-five foot driveway on them?
Correct.
That wasn't the original plan we saw, right?
That, that's the amended plat because of the requirements for the. The requirements for the strategic growth overlay zone and the R five zone. Require a twenty-five foot setback from the front, fifteen from the rear and ten from the sides around the buildings. So they had to adjust the building positions slightly on the plat. Require, basically recreating a twenty-five foot driveway for each unit at least. Um, there are some that have a little bit larger of a driveway. But all of the units have to have that twenty-five foot setback, so they all comply with that.
So that's the ones in the T, correct?
That, that in. All, all of T and all, all the frontages are twenty-five foot setbacks. From the road.
So it was less than twenty-five prior.
Yes, it was, the original proposal was twenty feet. Um, and with the code changes, they had to amend or change the location of the buildings to. Accommodate the requirements for the setbacks in the new zoning requirements.
And the code, the code also changed on the garage as well.
Code also changed on the garage, I see.
That's when we originally designed the townhomes. It was one twenty by twenty essentially. So.
So did you actually move the buildings back to get the twenty-five, even the ones along, or did they already have a twenty-five, the ones who are along the hillside? Because we were already concerned that we were cutting out. The toe of that hill.
Right, so they did move all of them. They basically moved them all back. The new code, they, they had typically about a twenty by twen- twenty foot, twenty foot setback on front rear. In the previous plan, the new plat has a twenty-five foot and a fifteen foot rear easement, or rear setback. And so they were able to, for the most part, move them back those five feet. There were some adjustments that they had to do between buildings and so. The, but it didn't substantially change the layout. It did move a few. Right, there's, there's some jostling about, but we did have the uh, geotech study look at. Um, and Brandon uh, uh, looked at the effect of the hillside. Um, and if that had any impact there, they felt comfortable with what, what was proposed.
Yes, so effectively we're cutting five feet further into the hill though, in a couple of spots.
Not, not, not totally. Um, when you actually overlay the uh, this, this new layout with the old layout. Um, it, the backs of those um. Uh, homes that are along that south side are pretty close to where they were before, so there's not.
Then how to shift them?
Um, I, I, I don't recall exactly how everything shifted, but. All of the, the numbers meet the set- setbacks and it didn't push substantially into the hillside, so we felt like it was okay.
I like that word substantially. I mean, I don't like it.
Well, not exactly the same, so that's the word I'm.
I know.
There's a nominal change.
If our geological experts say that it's not gonna slide down onto the homes. Then let's get that in writing.
It, well. The retaining well will still need to be engineered and designed and, and.
If you're digging deeper, it's gonna have to be beat up.
Ye- yes.
Okay.
Yep. But that doesn't mean it can't be done. It just means it has to be designed according.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a question.
Go, you go, keep going.
Keep going.
Um. On the phasing. So there were comments in the packet about we don't want to have any vacant buildings. Of course, we don't. But this whole property originally was gonna be all commercial was our goal. And so my concern is if we change the phasing to just be that simple twenty-four hundred square foot with phase one. And then all the rest of it is phase two and phase three, then theoretically you get all of the residents. With only having residential properties built. And you really don't have to build phase two. Commercial because it's still phase two. And we could end up with a twenty-four hundred square foot commercial only for a long, long, long time. So why? Why do you feel like you can't get commercial in as originally planned?
Well, we, I mean, we've spent the last year, you know, trying to get commercial entities in there. It's been tough. And I think a lot of it has to do with the way the economy has changed. And I also spoke to the guy across the street that's done Little Caesar's and some of those other. Uh, properties and it's, it's taken him a few years to do it, you know, to get those filled. So I do worry about having vacant properties there. Obviously, from a financial standpoint, being able to, to do that, but. You know, just having something vacant there, I don't think does anyone any good anyway with, you know, taxes or otherwise, but. Um. You know, if we do a twenty-four hundred square foot building, the likelihood that we fill it and move on to the next, I think is greater. Um. You know, so I, 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 I think it's just, just the way that things have changed with the economy and just the, just the situation there. Um, you know, I think eventually it'll all fill out and. Our intent is to, you know, do it as quickly as possible, but you know, doing it in a wiser way, I guess.
So I, I don't know if you've listened to any of the past city councils or even planning commissions on this item, but. I think, I think even getting the phasing that was last time barely made it through city council. And now you're asking for more. On the commercial side and the different phases, because Quinn is right. The last thing we wanted to allow to happen is all, all of this residential to be done. And I barely have any commercial up there. When we already conceded. We, we already changed this from a commercial property completely. To now a residential and you're asking us to allow a hundred percent of your residential with a twenty-four hundred square foot off, or building. And I, I don't support it.
So I want, I do want to clarify that the planning commission's recommendation was on phase one, allowing the uh, construction of the thirty. Thirty townhomes with the twenty-four hundred square feet of commercial. And then uh, not allowing the permit of phase two townhomes unless they have, also have a permit for fifty. Five thousand square feet of commercial.
I don't think we have that in our.
It, it was in the recommendation of a.
Oh, I thought Quinn, Quinn asked a question earlier and it's not in there.
It's not written in there.
It's not, I don't find.
I don't recall it either.
It just says concurrent.
They just said planning commission concurred. I'll go look.
But no, I, I have it on the recommendation in the, in the packet, so.
I don't know that it was either. That's why I questioned you in our earlier meeting, Trevor.
Do you know what page you're referring to?
Yes, two sixteen.
And that was the recommendation from planning commission, what he. That I don't know that it made it in there.
Regardless, it is a council decision on what, how you want to do that phasing. Um, that's a recommendation from the planning commission. You all have the ability to, to change those numbers completely.
So clarification, when you say they have to pull the building permit, what does that include? What do they have to do?
They have to submit.
Fulfill that phase two commercial requirement.
They have to submit all of the building uh, designs, engineering, everything. They have to um, have the utilities pulled to the locations and paid the fees for the building permit. Um, that includes all the, the impact fees and everything.
For fate for the commercial buildings before they can build residential buildings.
Correct.
Yeah.
Do you remember what the previous phasing was as far as the commercial was?
It should have been. It was three, three and three. Right? Isn't that what we did? Phase one, phase two, phase three, and they were all. Same. You'll have to forgive us, Jake. We have had several meetings about this particular property. Have you listened to any of them?
I haven't listened to any of them.
It's a fun twelve hours probably to listen to.
No, it might make, it might make you mad.
Well, yeah, well, but that's the thing, you know, I know generally speaking, you know, Don was there. Generally speaking, that it was kind of a contentious thing and, and you know. We felt like at the time, making those concessions was, was fine. I mean, the market's on fire and everything's rocking and rolling and then. All of a sudden, here we are. I mean, it's tough for me to even get financing to build the townhome, but I don't want a commercial. And it's just, it's just a different world. And I think that it would give us the ability to kind of move the whole project forward. Intent is not to build one building and sit and have a feel that, that doesn't do me any good either.
Well, you might owe money when you build the rest of it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right, yeah. So you have something to do with it?
Yeah, definitely, definitely, definitely. It's just, just the way things are structured and the way lenders have tightened their belts and. And there's just a myriad of issues, but.
Didn't this go up for sale? Isn't that, that's something I saw where they were looking to sell the commercial part of it?
The commercial, yeah. Um. I mean, we've entertained different, you know, subway and, and uh. Scooters Coffee and a bunch. I, I think, you know, by having the townhome activity there, you see that customer base. I think that would help drive, you know, the commercial aspect. I think sometimes we think of it as a reverse, but I think putting. You know, butts and chairs and townhomes and, you know, then people see, hey, that's. That's a customer base.
If, if you wanna reference the previous um. Previous development agreement, it's on page two twenty-eight that has the. Uh, in the packet, that has the previous approved development agreement.
So actually, I'd like to finish when I was, I was talking about. Um, so those commercial areas have already been up for sale before. You guys tried to sell them. So if we did a phasing change. Where one of those or all of those commercial ones were sold. It wouldn't matter, we, they would just be able to finish up the entire project all at once and we'd be without any.
Now, the development agreement had a reverter clause too, so it would've been a little tough to sell to a different.
There's two, there's two different items on the, on the previous development agreement for the, when they go to sell. There's one, there's the reverter clause that we can enact if we build, if we build, we want to. There's a second one is the assignment clause, so they, if they were to sell a portion of the project, they could assign. The new owner as, as a signer on the development agreement and we would agree to them, but. They would also be required to have the same development agreement requirements. It would assign them the same requirement.
Right, but it would change the complete timing of it. They could just, if, if we change the phasing. It wouldn't, it wouldn't affect that?
No, it, they're still beholden to, so if they haven't pulled their, they. But if the new owner, let's say, which there isn't one right now, but if the new owner. Has the commercial, they wouldn't be able to pull a building. They would, wouldn't be able to do their five thousand square feet until. That twenty-four hundred square, like they have to follow the same phasing together.
Okay, so they would be stuck is what you're saying, that the townhomes would not be able to go past phase one. If somebody bought the land and sat on it.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Did we have the square footage of the first um, development agreement for the, I'm not seeing, it just says, um. And now I lost it again.
I think at phase one, there were three buildings. I don't know if there was.
Have phase one show include three retail paths, but I'm not seeing if there was a square footage. It did not. Okay, so initially we had three retail paths in phase one and then another. One in phase two and then phase three was according to the ground, right? And now you're asking for. Um. Shoot, I gotta jump back. You're asking for twenty-five hundred in phase one, five thousand in phase two, and then the, the remainder in phase two.
I would argue, I would also argue too, you know, building three buildings. You know, we don't know what, who and what or how, you know, who's gonna come in there and use the building if we try and pigeonhole. Someone that would otherwise come in the project and do a specific building, I think that hurt us as well.
Well, but I think that was part of the intent was that it kind of lights a fire on. You being able to, to really go out and sell it, whether. That's through different P R or what, but um, it, it limits then um, this just going, well, we tried. Um, because we tried isn't enough and, and that's why it's wanting to be tied to it, so that. You know, it's.
Well, this, this is my livelihood. This is how I feed my family, so I'm not.
Well, you, you make your livelihood on these buildings, on the homes. The homes are selling like crazy right now.
Yeah, but.
We know that.
Yeah, but the commercial could, in essence, drag it all down and they can't. When they're tied together like that.
I have a really hard time changing the phasing. We've had this conversation so many times, um. I completely understand what you're saying. Built to suit makes sense for people and I understand that. However, the fear that I have is that we're going to end up with one commercial building and that's it. And like Blair said, we gave up so much commercial for this and that's our, the commercial revenue is the livelihood of our city. So it's hard for us to. To forego that.
But if I build. Empty commercial buildings and they sit, it doesn't do any good either.
We, we understand that, but this was not a commercial, this was not a residential piece of property. It was a commercial piece of property. And then we went to mixed use, so we went, I mean, it's been. A, a, a long, long process and many, many different proposals. It. Yeah.
Well, what, what would you have gained by doing it all commercial? I mean, it would have taken. It would have taken.
That, that's just the way, but that happens everywhere, but you don't see other cities just changing their commercial because it's not selling. You still have commercial areas and you still keep commercial areas, period. That, or you would be a bad planner as a city planner or a city on the planning commission and everything else. And so everybody signed onto this, this, we went from. A ton of commercial to now very, very, very little commercial being proposed. And again, this was a long discussion and your side of the table agreed to this.
Yeah, on circumstance.
And, and well, and I don't know, when was the last development agreement signed?
Twenty twenty-two was Sky.
So it wasn't that long ago and the commercial market, because I do commercial stuff, was already down. Because that was a discussion, that was a discussion, that was a discussion at the time, so. So, I mean, I don't, I don't, I, I, I also have issues, I mean, and I'm willing to concede that one if we're all okay with it. We set the garage thing so that we could fit two cars in a garage. And that was what we chose as a council. You take it to a twenty-foot garage, you take in the structure to put a garage door. And the mayor could probably tell you better than I can, but you end up with probably an eighteen, you're probably a sixteen-foot door.
You gotta go sixteen.
You're gonna be, and so. I, I wouldn't put tape measures to it. You're not gonna have two cars in a garage unless they're very small cars. And I'm not talking trucks or S U Vs. It's still just two cars are barely going to fit.
And that's.
A standard garage is twenty by twenty for random city ordinance. Standard garage, you go to sixty. Sorry, I'm, my name is Don Rushing. I'm, I'm on Jake's team. I'm a real estate person. Uh, and. You know, Blair, commercial wasn't down then. I, I've been in real estate.
After COVID?
After COVID, I, I, I probably had forty, like, hold on a minute, hold on. I have forty percent unoccupied spaces in commercial.
Pulling up.
Twenty twenty-two.
Office was, but not.
I can tell you, I've been sitting here for four years and not once have I ever had a commercial salesperson come to here and say commercials booming. We would love to.
Right now.
Well, in, in four years, no one stole us that.
It's booming. Will you tell?
Not once have I ever seen a commercial developer sitting, sitting in front of me today saying, oh, it's booming.
It's not booming.
It wasn't then either is what I'm saying. It never has been.
You know what I really hear between both sides? Is we wanna do this. You're, you're just like. Both sides are a little bit hung up on past and that's fine, other than it's gone. But I really do hear both sides saying. We, we want this to happen. And, and of course, it is commercials, what cities make money on. If you guys don't make money to operate on residential, it, it actually costs city, cities money. And, and a developer. Doesn't make money on uh, commercial land that's just growing weeds. So you, you actually both have an equal interest in making it happen.
That, that is why we have felt like we've conceded a ton to get this project even to where it is and then we just keep getting asked more. I mean, it, it's gone on for years being asked to concede.
So twenty-four hundreds, what the plat that I got in front of you, the color coded one? So twenty four hundreds, what the plat that I got in front of you, the color coded one? That equals those first two buildings, if you're looking at it, uh, those, those smaller ones on the, on the east side, tho- those equal twenty four hundred square square feet together.
That you gave them over here, sorry. Are the, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't bring him. But that would, e- each one of those buildings there on the east side, those two, the identical ones are twelve hundred square foot each. It, it, it probably is better to, to have a, a build for suit situation. Um, but at the end of the day, if it was called twenty four hundred versus those two buildings, you, you know, and I, I lived here for four years, by the way, and I, I watched how long it took, you know, where the burly burger is to get filled in. Building a, building a building, building a lot of buildings without a user isn't the best formula for success because, I mean, we've all seen properties that are vacant and we watch them, I, it's the weirdest thing how a property that's not getting used gets dilapidated and ones that are occupied stay nice, that's, that's weird to me, but, uh, you know, you, you don't wanna do that, you don't wanna get buildings that start getting dilapidated because no one's using them. Blair's got a great argument though, I mean, I, I've, I've been here, I've listened to this thing for years and you're absolutely right, you, you have given. My main point is I, I'm telling you, I, as a, someone just sitting there listening, you guys are saying, we wanna make sure this works, we wanna see this happen. And Jake's over here going, I wanna see this work and I wanna make sure it happens, so you guys are actually on the same team. I, I would just take that into consideration, every, everybody wins when the commercial works out. It, it really does, I mean, especially if Jake can hold those for, you know, twenty years. Yeah, it's great to sell a town home, but, you know, holding a commercial building for twenty years is uh, way better in the long run. So, anyway.
Trevor, can I ask you a question? Um, do we, do we have a square footage limit on these commercial buildings initially on the, the plan that has passed at all?
So.
I keep looking for that and I can't find it anywhere.
Uh, the original site plan has those and I can pull them out, but you know.
You mean like total or just?
Yeah, I mean, we have our three buildings in phase one or additional one in phase two.
It was coming roughly in at around eighteen thousand square feet total, yeah. And I, and I.
I just, I'm trying to see the difference that you guys.
A lot of that.
Buildings are such, you know, I'm trying to figure out the square footage.
A lot of that probably has to do with parking and, and even though uh, y- y- you don't wanna get into the weeds of it right now, I definitely wanna point out the, the owner that wants to build the gym here, like, she's here and if that, if that's favorable with the city, all of this is a moot point. And we all come out way better anyway because she wants to build a and fifteen thousand square foot building, which would, so if you're looking at, if you're looking at that color coded plat, she wants that to be on, you've got the entryway, the main entryway. She wants her building and everything on that east side, so now all of a sudden two buildings, twenty four hundred square, phase one, phase two, that's all moved, so I I really think that's probably the better discussion for everybody.
Well.
I, I would agree with that if it was being what's presented.
Yeah. Well, it's, so it's really a, a twofold, but she's here listening and she's gonna make decisions based off of, you know, what she hears. I know that's not a, you know, that's something you guys are gonna have to talk a lot about and rightly so. But I'm hoping she could get some positive feedback and I'm sure she's welcome to come up here and you can ask her questions about her gym how it operates and what her vision there is, all of that, but. Sorry, Joel, did I kinda cut you off or was it seem like?
Yeah, and, and just keep going on, but that's okay, um. None of what we have discussed has talked about her or the gym. Obviously, it's the other way around, showing how much we want commercial and how willing we are to work with people on it. Just by the amount of concessions we've already had to make for you guys. So, has nothing to do with her, this is between an agreement that we've already had that took an incredible amount of time and effort to go through. That now all you're saying is, well, we're not gonna give anything, we're not looking at that, we're just coming back and saying, hey, listen, those three or four points that you guys made us do on that development agreement, yeah, we wanna change those. So we could just have everything we wanted instead of even those three points. So to me, I don't know if I am on the same team. Cause for me, I love the idea of having that first part built and the commercial with it. And if that means y'all have to lower the price of that land or do whatever y'all have to do, because I guarantee you, just from looking at this and the townhomes, if you're coming here claiming that you're not gonna make any money off of it, it ain't true. Okay, so there is things that we can do to say, okay, how is it gonna work for the city? Because that's who we represent and like you said, it does cost, we don't have commercial, we're getting commercial in this city. We've got a couple of good things that have been working and both sides of the city are developing just fine. So when everybody says, you know, I can't get anything in here, well, we still are and we're not even out there searching. So, I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding other than that y'all wanna change how that improves the city's situation by us taking a greater risk by not having any commercial. Like you said, yeah, it'd be completely different. If she was already signed up and said, here's the building I wanna build and we wanna put that in the first phase, I don't think we'd have much of an issue here. It's the, well, yeah, commercial's bad and it's not gonna get good. Well.
Well, it benefits the city because it will help us facilitate getting profit down and quicker both sides.
Do you mind coming up to the mic? It just won't catch you on the recording of people listening.
He said it benefits the city because it facilitates getting the whole project done.
I don't see that, how that helps because the people that move in there, those are going to be the citizens. And they'll buy the places and then now they've got this huge area in front of them that has been mowed down, completely turned into a big dirt pit and just across the street, they already have one of those. And the wind's gonna blow it right on them and it's gonna keep blowing it on here until those areas have something in it. So as you say, you know, all of the, it, it, I just have to look at the citizens that are coming in also and I don't see how having the commercial taken out until later. That was my mic drop, by the way.
Anyway, so get on, I'll be good.
Did you find those amounts?
I did.
I feel like I'm comparing apples to oranges here, so square footage, square footage, that'd be helpful.
Right, so, um, with the current development agreement, it sticks it to the site plan that's improved, so they would have to build the building footprints as approved. So on the first phase, there was, there's approximately four thousand two hundred forty four square feet, actually, that's not approximate, that's exactly what it is. Uh, the second phase, the second commercial building that would have to be built after those were completed would be two thousand three hundred twenty two square feet. And then the final chunk that's after all of it that can be built at any time is uh, ten thousand five hundred twenty three square feet.
Okay, so there's the three buildings.
Three phases and the chunks is the previous phases were.
The first.
Just phase.
Phase nine.
Right, right. The first phase has three buildings and the total square footage of those three buildings were four thousand two hundred forty.
Correct, two at one thousand square feet and then the remainder. So that's, that's the, I think that's the limitations of our current development agreement is that it it sticks it to that site plan and so if you want, and that's kind of why the funding mission shifted to, to the square footage. Cause that was more appealing, let's get a square footage amount and then we can amend site plans if we have a better tenant, you know. Just give them a great national.
And, and originally it was prevented to us with the three smaller buildings, so they could keep the third one as a larger flex space for something like that, that was how it was presented from your side of the table. The final phase was to have something bigger that if, in case they found a bigger tenant or whatever, and that's, that's how it was presented to us.
Initially, those first four buildings are designed for quick serve, uh, whether that's, whether that's coffee, soda.
Cause at time they're talking about soda in the coffee shop and.
Ice cream would be great. Right, right, so that's, I think that's the, the best conversation is what square footage are you wanting on that first phase? I think that's a good place to start and then, because, because that would allow for then to solicit tenants and build a suit, but if you want to keep the current site plan, if you love the current site plan, then you could keep the current phasing. That's your prerogative as the council.
What, sorry, with, with the trend, the way it's written right now for phase three due to is that in this one or in the proposed one, sorry, now I get my mind off something, except in the one that, the original development plan that's in place now, it was uh, per market demands for phase three. What is it for this revision? For phase three, market demands as well.
Yeah, there, it's not actually mentioned, it's just.
Just square.
Just square footage for phase one and phase two and then phase three.
Whatever's able to fit.
And, and when you're looking at trying to do a larger footprint, I mean, I think most people are open to that. It's just, that's not what we're looking at right now. So it's hard to, I mean.
I don't, personally, no, I don't think that's a, a problem. What's being presented, but what we have to consider today is what's presented, which is one building in phase one. So that's why we're having this discussion, if you wanna do forty two hundred in phase one, then that's what we should be considering today, that's what should be brought before us.
And, and the way they were laid out before, those first two buildings were tax revenue generating type buildings too. I mean, when you look at it from a city standpoint, one was designed as a, as a drive, you know, they have both had drive-throughs, they both, that's how they were being built. That's how, that's how it was presented. And so that's why it's easier to take those at twelve hundred and twelve hundred because there's definitely revenue there on both sides of the table, so it, but if, if something else was, I don't think we're opposed to anything else going in there. If, I'm not opposed to a fifteen thousand square foot gym going in there, I don't think, unless I don't know what's going on with the code, but um, but there's all sorts of things like that, but that's, again, we're not, we're not looking at that on this.
One thing we.
Do you mind coming to the mic? Cause I know people are. Well, I can tell you what my mind is, maybe that'll help you understand, you know, so regarding commercial, I've sat here for almost four years now. I have been told over and over again, we can't have commercial, in fact, our prime estate, I was told once by somebody who was standing right there that it would never develop to anything but homes and now it's getting one of the best commercial things we could have asked for, so. I think that's our hesitancy because in my entire time sitting in this chair, I've been told commercial will never come to South River. I know that's not what you're saying, but I think that's why we're being so protective, because that's what we're getting told all the time. Um, I feel like when we put it in phases, what we've been told by many developers, the money is in the residential aspect, commercial does not bring you money, it makes you spend your money to bring it in. And so the reason why we phase it is so that the residential doesn't just get built, you get your pay and then you're on your way because commercial is so much more difficult. So the whole purpose of us phasing it is to make sure that we get our piece at the same time you get your piece. And so I think that's why you're seeing us already after moving ten acre, ten acres of commercial down to just two. Oh, believe me, we all felt the pain with that. So to get to this point was really difficult. I'm trying to understand and I, I don't know that I necessarily have a problem with the change of a square footage and I agree that I think it would be better for our citizens to have commercial that is not built to suit if it never comes. But it is just that aspect of making sure that the commercial is built at the same time as the housing because we all know that your money's in the residential and not in the commercial.
Well, if it, yeah, if one doesn't work without the other, then it's, it's a moot point anyway, I guess, that's kind of what I'm the point I'm trying to make, that now that things have changed, it makes it a lot more difficult, just as a whole. I mean, I, and I've, I said before too, it's not our intention to slow play it or sit on it, we wanna done as well because for me, it doesn't make money either. Even if, even if the residential makes more than the commercials, the commercials dragging the whole thing down, none of it works. That's our feeling and I've been through several banks and tried to, you know, finance or sell or do whatever and it's just we're trying to find something that moves the whole project forward.
So let me ask.
I understand where you guys are coming from, I, I mean.
Let me just ask, if you have a potential gym sitting right here, why is that not being proposed to us today?
Well, it kinda came along later and as we, I think it was after we submitted for the amendment that it came about and.
Because I mean, as it sits right now, she wants fifteen thousand square feet and we were.
But the, the issue with the, uh, fifteen thousand square feet is the parking, there's not enough parking.
Yeah, there would be enough parking for ten thousand square feet, that would require hundred stalls, but fifteen thousand square feet would require a hundred and fifty stalls. And that just, um.
Sorry, I mean, it's.
What, what if, I mean, let me, let me just throw this out there, what, what if we said, okay, yes, we'll agree to phase one at the single building and twenty four hundred square feet but kept the other two, the other square regardless of if it's one building or two buildings or three buildings in phase two. So, should have to pack it up, but we have, we have this, oh heck, now I just really lost it. All right, this, this one, so, the, the two, the, you got the second building and five thousand square feet in phase two.
Yeah.
The next pads in phase three, if those two just stayed in phase two, I mean, you only have to do the, the first one in phase, I mean, cause then you just have to either find a, a larger tenant to go in the one and do one building or whatever, I don't think, I don't think we would say no to a larger building than those buildings.
I mean, if I was a proposal, I'd be open to that. Trying to get off.
I just, well, I don't think, I don't even think pad, the, the other pad in phase three shows a square footage.
It doesn't.
It doesn't. So what would your proposal be?
Well, I would think we need to stick with the similar square footage is what we were in the original development, I don't think we should ask more of you. So it would be forty two, five, five and whatever the other one is.
Twenty three. We're asking, we're asking essentially like, just make it easy numbers.
It's on page two twenty five.
Okay, thank you.
Initial of phase one was five thousand, we're just gonna round up, make it easy, we were asking five thousand square feet, phase two was twenty five hundred.
Yeah, but the total was, where did that pay?
It was seventeen thousand.
Seventeen, it was seventeen thousand.
For all three.
For all three phases, that's what I'm saying, so as long as that was similar across it, I don't think I would have an issue with it.
Well, I mean, if we, if we did phase one, like we're proposing twenty four hundred and did phase two, so we're just kind of flip flopping it, I mean, that would help immensely, but you know, to get things back in the ground. And then our, our intention would be to come back and amend for the, the gym, it would be nice to have a discussion.
But that's, I mean, that's what I'm saying, so you would have that whole area, if the gym comes back or whatever comes back, I think we would all be open to the changing it to one big building.
Absolutely.
That would be awesome for all of us.
So, I mean, I would rather put the first building in, the twenty four hundred square foot building in phase one, then you'd go a five and a five in phase two and then whatever that leaves.
Phase three.
Although I, I, I thought the original intent was to leave phase three closer to like, it was pretty big. Although I I I thought the original intent was to leave phase three closer to like it was pretty big building. I can't remember the big house. What size is that?
It was seven thousand roughly for one and three thousand, roughly or four thousand.
For the, okay.
Yeah, there's the two buildings. Um, so a couple, a couple of thoughts from staff. One, we could always continue this and allow you to to. Uh either allow them to submit an updated site plan and phasing with the development. And based on this conversation. Two, if you want to move forward with with what you're you're talking about, you could put a another line on it that says. Or any combination or total between it, if phase one is. More than the total required for phase one and phase two, then that would satisfy the requirements. Language in the development agreement. To satisfy.
Cause that would, that would put. Well, the phase, if the one big building in your original intent was seven thousand, then that would leave. It'd be five and three. Wouldn't you?
Ten thousand.
No, we were seventeen thousand.
Total.
Total.
One, two.
Phase three was supposed to be ten thousand square feet.
Yeah, but that was seven thousand in the one phase. There was two, two buildings in phase three in the on that. See the other blue?
Right. Yeah, ten thousand square feet total.
Yeah. I was just saying that one building to the. What is that west? The west of the entrance was seven thousand something. If that's what. Works for you guys. I mean, I don't know. I don't think it matters, but. It could all be.
And if it so happens that the gym wants to come and be phase one. Even better.
Yeah, they would, they would have to be, I think, based on what we've kind of drawn out on the the plan. It would fit in that base. That's where it would go. It would have to.
Just remember, we want that. Just remember, the big discussion was is whatever, whatever everybody sees first is what they're seeing first coming into South Weber. Besides Burly Burger. So it need it needs to be nice, whatever it is. So.
Do you guys have any questions for?
Yeah, what type of gym?
Yes, and unfortunately, you have to, you have to state your name.
Yes, state your name, state your spirit animal, state what.
Off the spot question, so please don't do that to me. Um, so I'm Tammy McKay. I'm an owner of Bee Hi Fitness. We have a location up in Burgum City. And we live in Davis County, so we've always been eyeing South Weber, and that's why we started talking with Jake and Dawn. Um, we're an all fitness facility. We have. Um, I don't know, weight equipment and group fitness. So. We're just a really like a small town gym really is where we focus. So we just feel like South Weber would be a really good spot for us. Well, good, I'm glad.
What is an optimal size for your size?
Um, between ten, well, no. Thirteen to fifteen thousand square feet is really what we're looking to build and that's what we're hoping that we can. Maybe come in this phase one and just meet all of the square footage requirement just. And and we do, yeah, we pay sales tax, we support the local people. We're really good to work with. We've. Built good relationships in Burgum City, so that's what we want to bring here. Hopefully, we're hoping. Any more questions?
I don't think so.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so.
Keep in mind, sorry, sorry. The heights of that building is going to be in question in front of all those. That will be.
Thirty five.
Thirty five.
Thirty five. Well, I know, I know, but it's a look. It it'll be, it'll be the people you're selling those townhouses to that are gonna. Have that question.
We can see the back of a gym.
Doesn't help.
It'll stop the sand.
So I think we need to continue it. I'm not going to make a decision.
Yeah, would you guys like to continue this? Do you want to continue? Like an action on this tonight or do you want to continue this?
I don't believe our intent is to pressure you to. Like one discussion. So I I will say the plat. Doesn't have any bearing necessarily on the development agreement. The development agreement deals with the. The size of the um garages and the um and the commercial timing. Right? Neither of those are are determined by the plat. The the size of the garage is coming forward when it's building permit, right? We. We look at that as a building permit stage. And then the commercial phasing is obviously would be when we pull the permits. So. You could continue all of it. You could. Take action on the the plat and then we continue the conversation about the.
So I want to talk about those garages for a second because. Um, we changed, Jacob, you want to come up here for a sec? Um. We changed those those garage measurements for a reason. It's because we get developments such as these where there isn't parking on the street. These guys don't have parking within their development nor on South River Drive is. I don't know what's going to happen there. And then these residents come to us. We don't have anywhere to park and we don't have on-street parking in the winter either. And so that's why we made those changes. And I know that you guys are going uh kind of piggybacking off of an exception we made for another development, but that was for three buildings. I believe. Maybe four.
Three built, three buildings, yeah.
Three buildings, maybe four, maybe we don't know. Um.
But it wasn't the whole development.
It was not the whole development. Um, so what would it mean for you if you stuck with the twenty by twenty two?
I think the the main driving reason for this is. It doesn't, I think it causes all issues with fitting the buildings on the project. I mean, that's kind of one of the main drivers. Um, the other thing is to the. Uh driveways are now twenty five, whereas they were twenty before. So there is parking on driveways as well. You know, sufficient for people to. Visitors to park on drive. Whereas before it was twenty. Which.
Yeah, and that does.
So helps.
It helps.
And I know, I know, I mean.
So are you counting, if I may, are you counting the garages as two spaces and the driveway as two spaces? So you're saying each unit satisfies four spaces?
This makes it easier.
Plus the twenty one guests.
But the original plan had twenty two by twenty two?
Twenty by twenty.
So the way, the way we can. You know. Get closer to that requirement is to make it a little deeper. I haven't had issues with residents in previous projects parking cars in a twenty. By twenty. Trucks, yeah. Bigger minivans and cars, I don't. I mean, it's, it's tight, but it's not.
Is that the sites we have on the west side? Near your neighborhood?
Oh, there, no, there must. They have single car garages. Oh, you're talking the other townhouse?
Yeah.
They have single car garages and I don't, I think they have the the two car ones are sixteen foot cars or doors.
Okay.
Yeah, I I mean, a standard door is sixteen, so I mean, you can only fit, but you can fit in sixteen feet anyway, really, but. So that's kind of.
So this is. This is kind of more about the engineering of this.
On the bigger ones, they're putting eighteen foot doors. They're on the twenty two, twenty two. They're putting eighteen foot doors on them. All eighteen foot doors, not an odd door.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've done, I'm sure.
We're just trying to make them look nicer and not just have it be a storage unit. With a four wheeler in there.
Yeah.
That's what they all end up being and everybody drives by and sees that. And I mean, it's it's it is the entrance to it. Yeah, or they're trying to park on the street. And that was the intent of that whole change. Of trying to make them be nicer and. Not be so smashed in.
Well, we originally had it approved and designed. Well, based on. As a, you know, regular fact, so.
It was all based on twenty by twenty, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, we, it's all originally like that, it's like.
This is probably the, I don't, when I go, when you're going twenty by twenty two, is that twenty two deep or twenty two wide? All of them are going twenty two deep.
Cause I, because we can still manage that.
It's just the width that's throwing it off.
Yeah, each unit right now is twenty five feet wide. And so to have a twenty two by twenty two would only leave three additional feet. And so that makes it very hard to put a. An entrance.
Talking inches.
The, it's three feet.
I know, but we're talking about a difference that we're discussing here of two inches.
Two, two feet.
Oh, duh. Okay, you're right. I'm like, wait a minute, the whole argument is on two inches here.
Putting in there, yeah.
The, any more caffeine?
Is that the standard for most townhomes, twenty by twenty?
Yeah, most cities, that's their minimum requirement is twenty by twenty.
Is this some, we're, we're gonna keep seeing this and this.
Yeah, there, there's, there's a lot of conversation in the, in the planning. Yeah, there's a lot of conversation on on the planning community on what to require as garage sizes. Uh, the hindrance is on townhomes. Being a single family attached unit, there's very little. Little times that we can determine that garage size, but since this is an overlay zone, we are allowed to. Impose that that requirement to give them the additional density bump. Um, but yeah, we're, there's a lot of conversation about changing it from twenty by twenty to twenty by twenty two or twenty two by twenty two. I've I've pulled a lot of. And it's, it's all within that realm and there's no grand consensus. Obviously, bigger is better just with how. Our mindset is in the Americas to have bigger and better cars.
Trevor, I've got another question for you.
Yes.
Um, in the original um. Contract. We are talking about, we, we talked a lot about the buffer space that was between the commercial and the the residential part of it. Um, in this or in the last one. When was that buffer supposed to be put in? When the residential goes in or not until the commercial goes in?
It's considered a site improvement and so it'll be required to be installed at the improve, when they do their site improvements. So prior to pulling building permits.
Okay.
The buffer there is part of phase one.
Yeah, and it has the wall.
Yeah.
Right, so we would require the fence, the fence would be the the improvement. And then the landscape obviously can come after all the buildings are completed because we don't want to put in trees and then run them over with tractors.
Okay, I think we need to move along. Here. So we want to continue this?
Okay, if we continue the. Very basic discussion and development agreement to see if we come back with something different. Or do you want us to propose something or do we move on to the plat, I think? Cause there's two items to approve. We have the.
And the plat.
Wow, so I guess my, my first preference would be to. Do what you suggested and do phase one at twenty four hundred and do phase two. As those next two buildings. And have it. A lot of that change. So that would be eight thousand and leave. Seventy, whatever the other one plus.
No. Eleven.
Is it eleven and first two?
The total is seventeen thousand, right? Originally.
And I say that just in case the gym team.
Just so you know, Tammy, I'm hoping that it works out. Aren't we, Michelle?
So if we did twenty five hundred for phase one and.
So help me understand the phase two. Commercial. If we're shifting stuff to phase two, to me, it says concurrently. Are you building those buildings at the same time you're building the residences or? You start building the townhomes and the commercial comes in sometime in that phase two, which could be clear at the end of phase two.
It would have to be at the beginning because you can't have a certificate of occupancy on any residence of phase two unless phase two is permitted.
So you have to have, you have to have a resident identified for your commercial before you can even start your phase two.
That would be nice, but not.
Not just a building, you just have to.
According to the recommendation, but we need to include that if we do.
Yeah, so how long can you hold a permit? Wasn't lost like seven years?
Eight hundred and eighty days, is that correct? So, um, so caveats, you can, there's two mechanisms, right? There's the building permit allows them to build. And then there's the certificate of occupancy. Um, you could. Allow for the polling of the concurrent building permits and have them start building the residential units. And then also included in the development agreement that you'll hold any certificate of occupancy until vertical construction that has started on the commercial. Does that make sense? So those holding the certificate of occupancy puts a lot of. Their feet to the fire because they can't occupy the building without the vertical construction.
Right.
That's not specified in the planning commission's recommendation, but if you want to have a. Good cold and to put their feet next to, that's a, that's a really good one.
Would that would put phase two, whether that be one or two buildings.
Are you trying to do phase one at five thousand square feet?
No, I was gonna leave the phase one at twenty four hundred.
Twenty four hundred square feet.
And then be five. And like three. And then whatever's left in the other one. That's that's basically.
So five, eight and whatever.
Yeah.
Five, eight, that one's.
How does that sound to you?
Twenty four.
Twenty four phase one, eight, base two, and then remainder of phase three, right? Is that what you're saying, Blair?
Well, they could, the original was six thousand five hundred. But with more than six thousand five hundred between phase one, phase two.
Yes.
So if you're taking twenty four hundred for phase one, then you're just. About four thousand for phase two, but.
I'm going, I was just going off of the seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
If you take seventeen minus ten, that's seven, so you have seven in the first two phases, twenty four hundred and then thirty six. That doesn't matter, you just said it.
Don't do math.
Twenty four and forty six. Well, but I do think that if we're going to divide it up like that, um, phase three having ten thousand. Um, we've already heard that that's going to at at lower amounts, that's going to take an increase of parking and everything. So moving at all to phase three just doesn't seem plausible the way it's set up right now.
So phase one at twenty four hundred.
Uh huh.
That that leaves fourteen thousand six hundred. There was only seven thousand something in the one building, right?
Are you talking about initially?
So you basically have seven thousand or seven thousand change between those two buildings, even your fourteen six. Yeah, well, I, yeah.
You need some caffeine.
It depends on what's up.
Need some caffeine.
Yeah, so it's.
Seventy six, seventy six hundred.
Yeah, that's.
And if it changes, it changes, but.
It gives you a start on.
So can I, as, can I summarize what I'm hearing? In general, so twenty four hundred square feet, phase one. So keep that same recommendation from planning commission.
I mean, did we literally just stick around for an hour for twenty five hundred square feet for phase two? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Now, phase one would be twenty five hundred, twenty four hundred, and phase two would be seventy six hundred. They're asking for five thousand now. And then the rest phase three is that you're.
Yeah, it's all pieces. It's basically what we were on in the original.
Little bit. Yeah. So it's a little bit more.
Two billion, one billion, whatever that is.
Yeah.
But you're talking about increasing phase two and reducing phase three. Two, I just. I think it helped, this configuration really helps us to get off the ground. Going on.
So, so let me, let me summarize it, just twenty four hundred, phase one. And seventy six hundred, phase two. Or in the event a site plan is created. For a building that equals that ten thousand or more square feet. And this, those two requirements would be satisfied and you would allow all of the building permits to be issued for the. Residential construction. And you would allow all of the building permits to be issued for the residential construction.
That's right.
I'm fine with that. I am okay. I'm great with that.
So.
Can we specify that it is be high fitness?
You can't buy and see high fitness.
They'll give you a good deal. Um, so I've got a question. Does it make sense then to just say, here's how much and not worry about the building at all? Just, here's the first one, we've got uh, twenty-four hundred square feet that needs to be done in phase one. Phase two has to have the seventy-six, doesn't matter. And if they, if they qualify or move any of those around, it just moves the rest of the, the amount though, okay? So I kept on hearing the building part of it, so.
Well, that's where you're trying, that's why I'm saying it's not apple, it was apples or oranges when we were first looking at it. It's the, the original was done in buildings and then this one's in square footage, so that's why it was. I don't confuse.
So on the process, just so you're feel comfortable on that process. If it's just a square footage, they would just come in and do a site plan amendment and we'd run through the site plan amendment with planning commission to get that approved. They would do all the site plan review again. To, to amend whatever that square footage is, so we would have that test point to know how much square footage is going in.
Or could it just be a minimum of?
Right.
Statement? Then we wouldn't have to have any, right?
So is that? How do you guys feel about the garages? I would rather just get this done than continue up personally, but what do you guys think? I don't know that I'm gonna get any new information in a month as well, I'm staying.
Other than, I don't know what we got for a better. Or what did we? It was the density, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they.
Now we're asking you to back. But you got a higher density, yeah, I guess I didn't, I didn't realize that. Now you know why.
So they, they have the same unit count as before, we didn't add any more units. In fact, I think they've removed that unit. Yeah, yeah, it wasn't sixty-two, now sixty-one. And so, um. So in essence, with the short, the strategic overlap, that is what grants the additional density. They're not requesting any more than they currently have, but we also required a larger driveway and then we can discuss the. The garages to accommodate the amount of people.
You guys wanna think on this for a month or what do you guys want to do?
I don't want to because as you can see Jake, you see how long this meeting was to talk about two things. Okay.
So I think we know.
Jamie. If I make a motion, so we're talking regarding resolution twenty-three forty-seven, amending the development agreement. Um. It would be approving with the following amendments, allow for building permits to be pulled. Um, with twenty-four hundred square foot of commercial in phase one and seventy-six hundred square foot in phase two. Or in the event a site plan is created that equals over ten thousand, all building permits would be able to be issued.
Do you wanna, do you wanna have the twenty-four hundred square feet uh, be constructed concurrently with phase one residential? And then the twen- the seventy-six hundred square feet. And then add the in the event that there's a.
You guys know I ended up approving this last time, right? And how well that worked out?
Angie, will you read it one more time?
I would love to. Um, okay, let's see, approved with the following amendments, allow for building permits to be pulled. With twenty-four hundred square feet of commercial. In phase one to be built concurrently with residential and seventy-six hundred. Sorry, I'm, um, commercial buildings to be completed. Concurrently with residential in phase two. Or in the event a site plan is created that equals over ten thousand square feet, all building permits would be able to be issued. And. Uh, building. Uh, how do we say that concurrently? And built concurrently with residential.
You seen that they come in on phase one with a ten thousand square foot building, they can just go ahead and build all sixty-one, okay? I'm good with that. Is that legalese?
That works.
Is there a better way to do it? I'm, I'm.
I'll second.
Add minimums, did you just have the straight numbers, John, say?
At least.
Add a minimum. Just, you don't have to reread it. I second that.
No, 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 no.
You're gonna do it again?
You've got. Give me thirty seconds to make sure I got this written down. Okay. And I'm not saying anything about garages, right?
Michelle, does she need to do it?
No, it, it needs to be.
I need to do it again because I do not want it.
It needs to be amended to twenty by twenty-two foot garages.
Third time's a charm.
Okay. See Ron, the past does matter, okay? Um, Mayor, I make a resolution, no, I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-three dash forty-seven. Amending development agreement for South Weber Gateway with the following changes. Allow for building permits to be pulled with, in phase one. With at least twenty-four hundred square feet commercial buildings. Built concurrently with residential and at least seventy-six hundred square feet of commercial. To be built in phase two concurrently with residential. Or in the event a site plan is created that equals over ten thousand square feet of commercial. Then all building permits would be able to be issued. Being built concurrently with residential in both phase one and two. And accept the planning commission recommendations on garages.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, we'll begin with the roll call vote from Councilman Deal. All right.
Hi.
I'm actually gonna say no.
I.
Hi.
Hey. Motion carries four to one. Okay, next, rest. Resolution twenty-three dash forty-eight amending plat for South Weber Gateway. Any just questions on this? Would not, then well, let's.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash forty-eight amending plat for South River City Gateway.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, we'll begin with a roll call vote from Councilman Alvarson.
All right.
Hi.
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 All right. Hey, motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like we'll see.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mayor, please don't get angry. There was a typographical error, can you spell your last name? Okay, so on page, whoever is doing this. Page nineteen, it is spelled that way, excuse me, two hundred and nineteen is spelled that way. Page two twenty-one, it's spelled incorrect and on page two twenty-two, it's spelled both ways. So if we could fix that, okay? Thank you.
Wow. Impressive.
Okay, I think at this time, uh, we'll look for a motion to move into our local building authority board meetings.
Go move.
Second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right. I mean, when you're ready.
Actually, pretty continuous, I guess.
Thought we needed some sugar, huh?
I sure hope she actually has a gym. She had the T-shirts, I'm assuming, but.
Okay.
Ready, okay. Okay, first, we'd like to approve the minutes of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. I move to approve the July twenty-fifth minutes.
Second.
For motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A mo- motion approved. Next, uh. LBA resolution twenty-three dash zero three approving the official statement for the lease revenue bonds. Mark, would you like to come up or Dave, would you wanna lead into it first or did we just?
Sure, I'll, I'll do a brief background and then Mark can take it from there.
Great.
Um, the item before the board tonight is the adoption of the official statement. Uh, when going out to the bond market, you have two options for how to sell those bonds, either a market sale or a direct placement sale. The market sale, if you do that, you're essentially putting out a publication, an official statement. To uh, anybody that might want to purchase your bonds about your finances and, and what the project is for and all of those types of things. And that's your marketing material essentially. Um, so that's what's before you, is that a draft official statement? Uh, approving that uh, would not necessarily require the city to go out to market. Um, the other option is a direct placement where you would be able to uh, negotiate directly with a bank. Uh, and not have to go out to market, so you don't need an official statement in that case. There are, there are pros and cons to each option. Um, typically, if you go out to market, you get a little bit better interest rate, but you're locked into that interest rate for a longer period of time. Um, you aren't able to refinance it and typically until nine or ten years down the road. Whereas a direct placement, um, you get a little bit higher interest rate initially. But you have the ability to refinance those in a much shorter period of time, typically um, two, three, maybe five years. And so that's before the council tonight. Um, as kind of a discussion of which method, uh, does the council prefer, which type of sale? We do have um, market rates that have been provided by Zions and uh, Mark Anderson can talk about that a little bit. I was able to forward those on, um, just prior to the meeting, I know you didn't have a lot of time to look at that. Um, but we can review that, uh, we don't have um, indicative rates from a, or a, a rates direct from. Uh, the banks that might be interested in a direct placement. Um, those should be in tomorrow, so the hope was that we would have those available and we could compare them a little bit, but. Um, typically, the, the decision really lies on what do you prefer? A, a smaller interest rate locking in for a longer period of time. Or a little bit higher interest rate with the flexibility to refinance sooner. And the rates over the last little bit have continued to climb. Um, if you remember, we put a cap at five point five percent. And at the time rates were a, a percent and a half lower than that. And now we're, we're probably half a percent or so uh, close to that. And so the, the rates continue to climb. Um, but ultimately, that's the, that's the decision for which type of placement. Is how close is that spread for interest rate? Are you willing to take on a little bit higher interest rate for the flexibility that comes with that? Or go out to market? Um, but that's the main action item uh, for the council is adopting that official statement. Of course, before you feel comfortable with that, the conversation of which placement, um, you can have that discussion. Uh, as well as uh, just the general parameters of that statement, we, we put in the bond amount. That has been discussed at nine million, um, and uh, and we can go from there, so. Yeah, that's the main conversation point and Mark, you can add anything that I.
Thanks.
The resolution before you is basically approving the form. Now, the document you have is very mature, we've already had what we call a due diligence meeting with, with. Dave and uh, Mc- Mark and Jamie. Uh, last week, just, this is the city's document, so it's important that it's accurate. Usually we don't have uh, um, as mature a document as we have before you today, but. So it won't change much from the form that you see right now, if at all. Um, so that's, that's really. Sometimes we would have these available when you adopt a parameters resolution, but we really weren't. That hadn't decided what method of sale that we wanted to pursue and as Dave and I have conversed about the pros and the cons, he's. Asked that we keep both options open as we keep moving forward. Admittedly, we're in a pretty dynamic interest rate market that seems to be trending upward. The Fed uh, has indicated they probably expect to see rates move upward another quarter percent before the end of the year. We see uh, the, the federal. Uh, Congress unable to adopt a, a budget. You know, they've just uh, done a, a stopgap measure to keep the government funded for the forty-five days. So all these things add turmoil into the financial markets when there's not stability. Um, and uh, there's only a couple banks are willing to do direct purchases uh, twenty years and beyond. And I expect to have quotes from both of those tomorrow. Um, my guess is in a market environment, we'd be somewhere in the four and a half percent range. And in a direct purchase, uh, we could be closer to uh, even just slightly north of five percent. So. Um. We'll, we'll have some of those info, that information for David tomorrow that he can share with the council once we get those quotes. Uh, I just locked in a rate for. Uh, Syracuse City last week at four point nine five percent on a twenty-year bond for a new buyer station, they're gonna be building. Next to.
And was that market or was that direct?
That's direct purchase. And that was with a, a, a three-year call, it was, can't call it at all for uh, two, the first two years. Although third years and a hu- third year and a hundred and one percent. So it costs you, you have to pay a premium to, to refinance it, but after the third year, you can refund it at any time. And there is more ongoing discussion about the, the uh, persistence of. Inflation, the, the Fed seems to be talking about. Uh, resolve to maybe keep raising rates uh, higher if need be in the coming months of. From, you know, from the last ten-year perspective, we're in a, a high right now, and so that's why we think there is value. In having the ability to refinance the bonds. Uh, in a shorter period of time than nine and a half, ten years. Uh, Bank of Utah is another bank that uh, usually offers a callable at any time rate. So that even adds more flexibility, but it's probably, you know, two or three years out before the markets. It can trend back downwards to the point where you can get enough net present value savings to. To justify paying the cost of refinancing. Any other questions that you have with me? But let me apologize for being late, there was a crash in Weber Canyon that shut down the freeway and. I live in Heber and that's the easiest way to come and I just had traffic coming through uh. South Davis County, imagine that, that five o'clock, thirty at night.
So I know, I Quinn asked a question earlier, so if we. Approve this though, we can still leave both options out there, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, allows us to go down parallel paths.
Okay.
Uh, you know, if, if the city decides they wanna go market, we're gonna probably need to do a rating presentation next week. To have funds available by the sixth of December, we drafted another calendar that shows what that looks like if we go in a market direction.
Do you know what the market is right now, interest rate?
Well, it's in the four and a half.
Four and a half.
Range, I think that what there was sent was a four. Forty-eight or something like that today. I think that, uh, I think that's. I think that's maybe a little aggressive, I'm not, I'm not confident that that's applicable. But it's maybe a little bit higher than that.
Hey, Mark, thank you. Hey, Mark, thank you. Any questions? Anyone have any questions for Mark?
I will say that the um both the price of the building itself and the interest rates right now, um, I feel are ridiculous and really, we shouldn't be doing it at this time.
What do we do instead? I mean, you've seen our public works though.
I know. It needs to, that thing needs to be demolished and I don't think it would take much more than just me with a hammer to do it.
Yeah, the winds can blow it down.
Oh, like a good way to do it, I know. Um, good way to do it would be to um start lowering the cost of the building. I mean, it's, it, it's almost nine million right now. Um, and I know it's a beautiful building, but I think that is still way too high for what we need. Um, I mean, we talked about how much this is going to be per person for the next twenty years. We have a lot of people in the city that are on fixed budgets. They can't afford that. It doesn't change the amount that they get versus how much we all have to pay. And I mean, a nine hundred square foot training room, I mean, we could start by cutting, I guess, the fourth bathroom um that's in there. Um, it just, to me, just seems way too big for what we need.
I would love to sit down and talk with you about all of that.
And we can.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. I would love to talk to you about the size of the building. I, we have cut it and cut it and cut it and cut it. And like Haley said, we don't have any other option. We have, we, we have to have something to replace what we already have.
And, and it's built for the future.
Right, like.
You're not gonna build a building that just meets our needs right now. That would be fiscally irresponsible.
Well, I think what we can look at though is, I mean, if we're looking even just at the number of bays there, um, we don't have that and we're not going to have that in the future. And those could be just as easily done with a carport over them to keep them out of the weather. We could also look at um where we've got right now trucks that are going to be parked all throughout it. Uh, most of those we're now on leases for. So it's not like we're gonna have to worry about what the weather is going to do to them over the next fifteen, twenty years. I'm just saying that, and understand, you guys, I really do want you to understand this. I sincerely appreciate how much time and effort you guys have put into this. I mean, it's it, it's gotta be frustrating just to even hear my voice right now, and I apologize for that. But at the same time, I gotta tell you, and, and you know, I've said this for a while now. When, when it was gonna be six million, I thought, okay, now we're dealing at least with something that would bring it down from fifteen dollars a month down to ten dollars a month. And those are still based on whatever interest rate we're supposedly going to be getting, which again is way too high. If, if we were sitting down and deciding we were going on a trip to Alaska and interest rates were through the roof, we would all say, you know what, maybe we wait a couple of years. Now, the problem is I know that building probably won't even last a couple of years. The rats have eaten through the sides of it. Couple more rats and that's it. There's no building. But that's why I, I'm just trying to say if the, if the building itself could just be reduced to something that instead of a bay maybe has a carport, instead of a, a huge training room, you, you take that and the break room and combine them. Um, I mean, it, it's a beautiful building and I'm sure y'all have reasons for the lobby and all of those kind of things. And to me, it's just I, I, I wish we could afford it. And it, it's no complaint on you, that committee or any of it. It's just, I, I don't.
I know it's not, but I, I, I still would love to sit down and talk with you. Nine hundred square feet for, how big is this room there? You just did this on the spot, man.
Well, nine hundred square feet.
Maybe.
So we, we're hoping to have a facility. Right now, we don't have a facility in town that we can even have a mayor's meeting, you know, the.
Direct center.
It doesn't fit or it's in use during the school year. So the whole point of having, just, just so you know, just, I'm pulling that one out because we need somewhere where we can have the firefighters have their meetings. We can have trainings with all of our public works, like Blair said, we're building for the future. We're gonna have more than a couple of guys and they're going to need workspace and they're going to need room for training and, and potentially move people from city hall working over there and they'll need an office. And they're going to need a.
Four offices.
And they're gonna need a break room. Because, okay, so then, and if the.
That's why I'm saying.
Meeting room is used, we should make them have a break where? Like, we're not building an extravagant, we're not building a Clairefield City. Oh, he's not even here, dang it.
Well, but, but to, to, to her point, go, go look at, look, look at the price of the contract we've awarded. It is not, I mean, we have a site that needs a lot of money.
Yeah. Needs what? Two million just for the, the groundwork?
Yeah. And so building even these buildings and you could, we, we could strip out some little things, I mean, in the office area, we can strip out those things. It's insignificant on like you still need.
Right, that's why I'm talking.
I don't agree that you can cut bays because
I don't either.
I, I don't want my, my employees parking a work truck outside in the snow. I don't, I'm sorry. It's my tools. It's the city's tools. I don't want that at my own office.
Then a big metal pop up.
We basically have a big metal shed. That's what her, the one building is. It's not anything fancy. It barely has heat in it.
But we're talking, I mean, we've seen what we've just done over there at the fire department.
Yeah, and, and cost, cost, don't bring that, so cost per square foot versus that versus this, we're way below that. And that's, I mean, we, the one building is just a building with heaters in it and a, a cement floor and lights. That's what the one building is. We don't have a bathroom in there. We don't have anything in there. It's just a building. Then we have a cement storage, which we have to have. That's what we don't have over there. Would you, I don't know what to do with that if you have that.
But see, those are, you're, you're, you're going into all of it where it's, okay, this is, this is no choice. It has to be like this. And where it's been in committee for that long, y'all have gone through all of these answers and back and forth and everything like that. I haven't seen any of it. I haven't heard any of that to Angie.
I haven't seen you ask.
We, we actually made sure that everybody on the council got that.
Every single, every single time I have asked Dave, is this the time that we say or vote yes or no for the amount, other than at the beginning of the year, when we had the high price and y'all all heard me there? There's no way that we can do that amount of money.
And when we had the high price, every single one of us said no. And we've gone from sixteen million down to where we're at.
Yeah. So if, in, in, in this, I'm, again, I'm not trying to argue.
No, no, the, we're gonna vote here in a minute, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah. If we would have said here, you get six million dollars to build it. I guarantee you, y'all could have built it for six million dollars. And it would have met every standard that we needed. But we went through this, looking at everything we're going to need and want and then get to, we're at, we're at this. And I think a lot of it is the timing because construction material has gone up, cost of labor has gone up, everything has gone up that way.
I don't see it coming down.
You may be right and.
I mean, there, there's no way it's coming down. Everything around it is going up. And, and, and so I think I personally think you kick it down the road and you, we're not doing the city any favors, but that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
And, and I already know where we're at on it, so it.
Yeah.
And I'll just agree to disagree with you.
Okay.
I think that's the problem that we've got is it's been kicked down the road too long, way too long and, and now.
And I'm not talking about kicking it, I'm talking about changing it. So I just, I don't want it to be seen in the light of no, I'm saying, let's go do it five years later. I'm saying with the cost of it and the interest rates and everything that's going on, right now, it needs to be a smaller, less expensive building. That's all I'm trying to say.
And I disagree because I think you're gonna be building onto it and then you don't have the funds to do it. If you're gonna bond for it, you bond for the entire project, not for some, not a, a half project. And you know what I meant to say?
Yeah. I don't think it would be that, yeah. Anyways.
Well, problem is if we do that for a few years down the road and then we try to add on, it's gonna be even more money to build and add on there. So I think we're to a point that it's, we've just gotta.
I think for me, and I, I have a lot of the same concerns, I think we all do. But for me, it was looking at the F A C and realizing that that was built to accommodate the growth of the time. And Angie's correct, there's, there, I mean, we've tried to do even, there was some city council meetings that were so heavily intended. We had nowhere to go. Um, so I think keeping in mind with, you know, going smaller with the hope to add on later, we can't do anything with our F A C. We can't do anything with that area and it would be way too expensive to even add anything on. So I do, I do see the wisdom and looking at the potential growth.
And the only thing, the only other thing I would add to that is we, we haven't finished design either. We still need to sit down with Valley Design and I think Brandon has started that process. But there will, this is a full design build, that not one thing and then they, and, and it all gets repriced.
And I think it's our twenty one, which that gave us, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Exactly. I mean, they're not going to exceed it as long as they meet our parameters, but he's also mentioning improvements. He's mentioning different types of structures. He's ma- I mean, there's all sorts of things that can happen between now and that final thing. We don't think it's gonna go over a certain amount anyway, but I mean, it could also go down. We don't know. I mean, we can change that design. The design has not been finalized. So you can ask all the questions you want. We can't tell you what color carpet's going in there. We can't even tell you what the lights are. The, the layout of the, the floor plan may completely change. We may not get a nine hundred square foot because it all has to be done. We are going off of a sketch to give them something to bid off of. That's it. So that, that was the proposal and that was what we awarded is we awarded the design.
Yeah.
And, and they've given us a total construction budget, yes. But obviously, we gotta put contingency on that. But it can also go down, but I don't see it going down, but.
Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm easy. Do we have to decide whether we wanna go to market tonight or?
No, we're just approving the amount, correct?
You're approving.
Proving the, just the form. It's just the form of the resolution. It's not an amount. It's not anything.
But I, I really would like to hear from the council, your feelings on direct versus market because as, as Mark said, we do need to make that decision soon, so.
I prefer direct.
I prefer direct.
I prefer direct.
I'm direct. I don't count.
Yes, you do. You're president.
Building authority, you can vote.
Yeah, I'll, I'll clarify that. It, when he gets the rates back, I mean, if that's a lot bigger difference, then it may sway me, but if you're a half a percent, but yet you can refinance in three years, I lean towards.
Yeah, that's the key to me.
Me too.
If it drops, we need a refinance. I don't wanna be stuck in on one.
That's why I'm, I'm so, I, I can't even give you that answer because I feel like if we go direct now, gosh, it will suck if rates drop in five years, which they may.
Well, direct allows you to change.
On that market.
Market does not allow you.
Okay, so the one that allows you to, so. You guys are saying that you wanna go.
Direct.
Correct.
That's a higher interest rate with.
Higher, but. It may be a hike for three years, but then we can change.
Okay, I was thinking as an oddball out, but apparently I am with you nice. It sucks.
Also, the idea that, that interest rates aren't great right now. And so if you want to maintain that flexibility, then you, then you're looking at direct. I heard everybody but Joel.
Joel, direct's fine. Um, I mean, if, if, if we're banking on the rates going down, well, then we should be waiting.
Well, not even, like five years, ten years.
Will the rates go down sooner than the commercial driven market? I'm sorry, I'm being smart. Alec.
Yes, you are.
Well, that's helpful because once we do get the numbers, right, we'll have an official bid essentially quotes from two banks, um, is what Zions is telling us, so we'll be able to. Yeah, so we'll forward those on to the council. You'll be able to see those, but knowing that flexibility is what you're, what you're asking for right now, the ability to refinance or call, to use a bond term.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to make uh, uh, sorry, to approve L B A resolution twenty three oh three approving the official statement for lease revenue bonds.
Second.
We have motion in a second. Again, with roll call votes, starting with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 You get a vote.
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry. No.
A motion carries.
Mister Chairman, President, I have moved to adjourn and convene city council meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There, next item on resolution twenty three dash.
Thank you.
Nine, amending cost uh consolidated fee schedule.
I just have one comment on this. I'm that was in public safety when we, we talked about this and I get, I get the reasoning for the, the concern I have is with somebody that's coming to church for like four or five hours. They don't get charged.
Doesn't, they don't get.
But they, well, they, is it clearly notified? Could they just say per day? So if I were to just go there for a few hours, is it clearly marked that?
We've got signs up that says.
Per day?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only if they stay overnight.
Overnight parking.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the sign, if I remember right, says no overnight parking by permit only. And then you'd be able to get a permit for overnight parking, but day parking, there's no charge.
So how are you monitoring that?
The sheriff.
So Davis County does.
Davis County does.
And were you able to look into getting the little?
Yes, we're working on the process of having a Q R code there that they could just go.
I'm really glad that I could do this and you all know.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
And we're gonna have a QR.
And it'll like. We've earned that a, a project in sandbox there right now that we're doing, so. That's awesome.
Yeah, we're gonna make it easy for those that need a permit. Right now, the process is you have to come into city hall and get a paper permit and whatnot.
The only trick and what the sheriff was saying is that somehow he has to know if they did get the permit too, so. They'll have to put it out. Okay.
Then how often do they, go ahead, Quinn. How often do they check it? We have to bring it to their attention? Is somebody going there every single day? Is there a parking monitor?
I can ask them what their standard methodology is or timing, uh, but it is something we've talked to them.
They get a seven day permit, but they're gonna have to post that somewhere on the vehicle.
Yeah.
But they can do it daily too, right? It doesn't have to be seven day?
Just a day.
It's just up to seven days that the permit could last. So it, it forces them to come back in if they want it. Again, it's not some.
Those three dollars for seven days or three dollars per day, uh, you said, also twenty one dollars if they.
Right.
But if somebody wants to do it for three days, they have an option to pay nine?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, let's really quickly. I told Blair to hurry and make an emotion, but what if someone goes, wow, twenty one dollars a week? So I'm paying eighty four dollars a month to live here. Then what do we do?
Live where?
What if they park their RV over there?
They can't, they, they can't be in it.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
It's not camp.
Not, it's not a camping.
Not a camping stall.
Just clarifying, I mean, obviously if I saw it, somebody else would think it.
Yeah, I think.
Obviously. Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty three forty nine.
Go ahead, you bet.
It's just a simple one, so it's citizens can reapply for the current permit expires. Is it only citizens?
If they don't have.
Then, okay, then it shouldn't be citizens.
Is that, it's.
Resident would imply that they have to live here. Citizen does not imply that they have to live here.
It just means that they're a member of the United States of America.
Basically, I guess.
Does that need to be in there or are we excluding those that are visiting from outside the nation?
May, maybe we are.
Citizen of some other country.
All the non-citizens can't do.
It can say, would you like me to amend that?
People.
Well, it's not in the uh.
About.
It's not in the consolidated. It just says about what it targeted, right? I mean, that's in the memo, but is that?
We got, what's the actual text?
Three dollars per day with a seven days maximum per permit, only one permit per person at a time. And the permit may be requested after the expiration of the current permit. Permits are vehicle specific and may be applied for only.
I think, I think that's a bigger, I would say no. But, because that's like you're allowing. So, the, so he was trying to ask everybody, but no one was listening, so.
Would you entertain the idea of, because I know of one residence that we have in South Weaver that has a semi truck, that he parks up there all the time and he'll drive the tractor home.
all the time and he'll drive the tractor home, but he'll leave his trailer there. Of creating a permit for six months or twelve months that he could purchase to keep his vehicle there. Rather than have to go every seven.
Gray area there, because what if I have an RV that I would like to park there?
That would be, that would be.
But you're not living in it.
Exactly, but that would be cheap RV rental.
That's, I've had thought of that, that's true.
I would say no.
I'll consider it, Mayor, I'm considering right now.
Joel, would you like to change the word citizen to something?
No, because it's not in the, it's not in the.
Not in there.
Okay. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution twenty-three forty-nine, amending consolidated fee schedule.
Have a motion. In a second. Do a roll call vote, string with Councilman Deals.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Uh, going to new report, reports, any new business, anyone have any new business?
No.
Would like to bring up? Does anybody have, uh, any council committing reports that they'd like to make?
You always throw us off when you do this. You, you want just anybody who has new.
This new business is not your committee.
I know, but your committee, okay, no new business, but.
Business and now we'll.
Do you want to go down the line?
We'll do committee reports if you, and we'll start here. We can say yes.
Um, we had a big win. We got the Public Works raises passed. Yes, a well deserved one.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Thank you, Joel.
P R committee finally met. I want you all to know that just trying to get this meeting on those books was like a very difficult algebra question, but we got it. Um, so some things for you guys because I know this is the most important part of our council job. You all think that. Okay, we have our Halloween event coming up on October thirtieth. That's at seven o'clock. We need to provide a trunk. The city will provide the candy. Does anybody have a particular trunk they would like to utilize and we can decorate with? Whatever.
In the back of a pickup truck.
But I can, if you want, I can bring my old pickup truck down.
Yes, yes, yes.
That would be cool.
Done.
Can you bring Skelly and we can put it like?
Yeah.
Dragging or sitting on it or something?
Yeah, for sure.
That's a.
Picking him up on the way down.
Yeah, awesome.
There you go.
Okay.
Um, and costumes are required.
Yeah, costumes are required.
For the, for the girls.
No.
That's a very chauvinistic statement.
You're wanting to put it.
I'll be there.
I was going to say, you weren't there last year.
Wait. It's at the F A C.
When is it?
September third, yeah, September, October thirty.
September thirtieth, October thirtieth at seven o'clock. And I was thinking that we should do themed costumes. And we can do, yeah.
I have one costume.
I have a really good idea.
Well, that wouldn't.
Work.
We should do, Larry, you're not listening to me, we should do, um, Taylor Swift era's costume.
Mayor, you're moving on.
Bring your costumes. You have an excellent costume.
I know, so it counts for two years.
Anyway, okay, so there's that. Looking ahead, we have our Christmas breakfast with Santa. That will be December sixteenth. We have figured out a way to, um, have it be what it was in years past. Um, and kind of making some adjustments there, but we will need some helpers. So if you have some family that you think could come help behind the scenes, that would be great.
She's asking, but we said we would volunteer everyone to bring a family member or multiple.
Family member or something. Um.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Grills.
We used yours last year. We are figuring out where the cities is. I don't know where it went.
I can get bigger ones. We have eight on trailers and there's, like, if you didn't think that was big enough, we can.
No, it was big enough.
It was the one, it was on a trailer.
Yeah, they're on trailers. I just.
You just got.
We just have bigger ones, yeah.
So we have the city's one. I'm not sure where it was last year.
Figure is better.
I don't know where it was last year, um.
I don't know and it, it didn't work very well.
Something was wrong. It was on hill.
Yeah, and we are struggled on that hill.
Yeah, so we're gonna move to the other side. We're gonna move into where we're doing our truck or tree, trunk or treat at.
Be around back.
And then we'll move the, um, the, the serving line right by those back doors. So they'll be cooking right there and they can come in.
Do we have a date for that?
Yes, Blair. It's December sixteenth.
Thank you.
From eight thirty A M to ten.
Just need to make sure I get a grill.
Be there at seven, wearing an elf costume.
Just go. At the sixteen, that's a Saturday. Um, and then they'll have breakfast with Santa or Santa afterwards, so. That is that, um, that, yes.
When have you got anything? I have one quick thing on the dust update. We got the report from University of Utah. Um, there, I can't remember, four months worth of monitoring. We had one day that we exceeded the limit and you guess what day that was? July fourth. With all of the fireworks going off, we exceeded the, uh.
Because it's small part of.
All the smoke and particles from, South Weaver does fireworks and anyway, that's the only time we exceeded. Other than when we have the Canadian fires blowing down here. Uh, but the other thing they found out was, um, city council, they had one here at city council office. Um, the worst days for bad air still within spec were when we have south winds and southeast winds, not east winds.
Wait, what? So interesting.
So our worst bad air days for the sensor here at South Weaver was when we had south winds and southeast winds, not east canyon winds.
Part of that.
Is landfill.
Well, you got landfill, but we have crusher going on up above there too.
Yeah.
And which we don't have a lot of.
Yep.
Push on.
And so we're, we're working on that, trying to see what things we can do. Um, I talked to an individual from the Division of Air Quality for Utah and he was coming to monitor the landfill, this storm, to see what's blowing up and blowing up. Um, but the, anyway, that was interesting data. So the worst air here at South Weaver is not coming from the pit. That's all I have.
So you may or may not know this about me, but I really, really like data. So I just want to tell you. Thank you.
Oh.
For the last four years of really good data, because otherwise we just. Thank you for your hard work.
Quinn's done an excellent job on that.
Might become a permanent citizen.
It's the only way it's going to probably keep going.
Volunteer job? Oh, did you want it, Angie?
Is that what you were saying you wanted?
No, just what if Quinn leaves for a little amount of time?
One of his kids will do well on our mission.
Mayor, I don't have any new business. That hasn't ever been talked about.
I don't have anything.
Dave, you got anything?
Yeah, I think we need to report on the conversation we had at the Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District, speaking of the landfill as we were. Um, Mayor is a board member up there, has been a part of these conversations for a while and, and had made mention of it. But recently they reached out and requested a meeting with all of the city managers in the district. Um, and the long and short of it is, we have a garbage problem and that is, as, as Trevor alluded to, we like bigger and better and we also like to consume a lot. Um, and within our district, we have a lot that's going to the landfill. Essentially, uh, the more that we can divert away from the landfill, the better and the longer that landfill will last. I think that's probably not news to us. Um, but they said at the current rates, if we did not divert anything from the landfill and everything from the district went in there, we probably only got eight to ten years of the landfill. At the rates that we are diverting things, we probably have closer to twenty, um, eighteen to twenty years. So there's a long conversation that's been taking place at the board up there, which is made up of all of the representative cities within the district. Of what do we do? How do we divert more, uh, from the landfill? Which, when I say divert more, we're essentially talking about recycling programs and green waste programs. Because green waste and recycling are the two major areas that if we divert from the landfill, will, will make a difference to that. Um, obviously, at some point, the landfill is going to be, uh, completed and filled and yet done its useful life. And so there will always be a conversation of, of what do we do with waste? But the conversation that we had was essentially saying, how do we incentivize or require, depending on what option that you want, to divert more? Increase the life of the landfill and a bigger picture problem of how do we just deal with, um, the waste that we create more efficiently and more effectively? So this is more of a tip of the iceberg type of conversation that we anticipate um, coming from the landfill and from the district, either a kind of a requirement that all cities have a recycling program or more of an incentivized approach of having, um, incentivized rates. That if you have recycling programs, then you can have, um, better rates or whatnot, so. That is yet to be determined. The board is talking about that. But they, they called the mayor and they called city managers in and had this meeting to essentially get stakeholder feedback um, about what to do with this problem because it's, it's a problem for all of us. And so I bring that to your attention because we'll have conversations in the future about recycling programs or green waste programs or both. Um, and ways to divert waste from the landfill. So that's more of a heads up than anything, but it's a problem that we're all facing within this, within the Waste Management District.
So they do have the Murph up there and so, uh, a lot of people say, well, we've got the recycling program going on up there right now. So why do we need to do the blue cans and recycle more? And that's true, they are doing some up there. But they can't do the quantity that they would like to do with the recycling with the blue can, that then it's called, uh, clean waste. And with clean waste, they can recycle probably ninety some odd percent of the, the recycling they're doing up there now has a lot, once it's contaminated. So if you throw a cardboard box in your garbage can and then you throw food scraps in there with it, that's contaminated, they can't use that. So that has to go out. So the only thing they can recycle up there are blue them cans that they're doing. Uh, and then they've got commercial that'll bring in, uh, cardboard and whatnot that they'll recycle. So they think they can increase the recycling by, you know, sixty percent if we go to the blue can recycling program. That's the way that they're leaning and I think that's probably what you'll see them do.
Like a, a countywide mandated recycling program?
Yeah, and they don't like mandates. Everybody balks on mandate and so it's, it's, they're going away from that terminology of this is going to be a mandate, it's just going to be, this is a requirement of the district. It's not a mandate, it's just, this is the district, the district can do that, so.
I love it when the government just changes the word.
So you're probably going to be seeing that, but they've looked at costs on it. If, if people have got two cans, they feel that they can get rid of the one can and go to a blue can. And then put the recycling products in the blue can and it's, and the blue can, they think might be just a tiny bit more if you've got two cans. They were even entertaining them, well, it's not going to be any more expensive. It'll be about the same, but.
Because we pay for them now.
You're paying for them now, you're paying for the second can.
And the blue, when we're in the blue.
Well, but then why did they close down all of the ones for all the schools?
Because people keep throwing them all over the street.
Before that, they even said, you know what, we'll take the cardboard, but we're not going to pay the schools anymore for it. They actually just pulled it, so all the schools now, and that's why South Weaver did it also, was it was finally, listen, we don't get any donations anymore from this, from everyone bringing the cardboard to, to help their kids in their school. So the dumpsters went away and they're doing that in all of the, the different districts, so. It's, it, I don't know, just kind of seems to me that like they're looking at, uh, getting another way to get um, a few more bucks out of their recycling program of which only ten, fifteen percent of it can actually be recycled, so.
I don't think they're doing it to make money. I think they're doing it to save on the landfill. What they're after.
Pretty sure they're a business.
Huh?
I'm pretty sure they're a business.
The county? We own, we run it. So cities run the district.
So Waste Management is a city owned?
No.
Not, not, not Waste Management.
Waste man, not Waste Management, that.
That you said.
This is integrated waste management.
And that's run by the city and county.
City, it's ran by the county.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was just Waste Management, all that whole thing up there.
It's like one of the biggest topics that the county commission.
Yeah.
When they're Weaver and Davis on what they're going to do with that because, and, and it's costing them money.
So, so the Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District is the long name for who operates the landfill and it's a government entity. All of the cities are part of it and have a board member and. Financially, it's in that form.
Yeah. And then Waste Management is just the company that picks it up.
They are, yeah.
Learn something.
Okay, we'll, we'll end up having more conversations about recycling in the future, but, um, the district, the feedback, when they were asking for feedback from the city managers, mayors, we essentially said, we don't want to, we don't want a mandate program. The incentivized pricing is a whole lot more interesting. Um, North Salt Lake is a very, uh, very interesting case study. They have a pricing structure that really does incentivize recycling to the point where if you, um, if you buy multiple cans for blue recycling, it's not very expensive. But as soon as you buy a garbage can, it is extremely expensive. And so they really incentivize that. Typically, when cities roll out recycling programs, you've got one of three options. You either just mandate it and say, everybody in the city gets a can. If that's the case, the cost per resident is, is lower because everybody has to pay. Or they will do what's called an opt-out program. Well, they'll say, everybody gets one for a period of time. If you contact us, you can opt out of the program. And their rates for participation are typically high in that scenario. Or you have an opt-in program where they say, nobody gets one unless you call in and actively opt to the program. And the rates of participation are extremely low in that scenario, so, um, North Salt Lake is the only kind of optional type program in the county where because of their pricing structure, they have a high percentage of participation, even though it's optional. All the other cities had to do the opt-out or the mandatory, um, methodology in order to get the rates um, where they wanted them, so again, we'll have more conversation about it, but there's some background play.
Okay, I think that's it. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Close session.
Close session.
To adjourn and move into a slow session.
Uh, for, will you name the items we're going over?
Yeah.
Okay, say it again, Mayor.
So so we'll adjourn and move into the closed session, closed session, we're going to be discussing sale of real property. Got a legal matter and a personal matter that we need to discuss also.
So, man, second.